You weren't at the commissioners meeting, were you?
Anybody?
No.
Okay.
Give me an order so everybody could stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We got a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Justin?
He is here.
Redstone?
Present.
Rick Sims?
Present.
Andy Bozek?
Present.
Mike Rickner?
Here.
Sylvia Graham?
Here.
Jeremy Rivas?
Here. All right. Got a quorum. Two more minutes from the January 3rd, 2023 reorganizing meeting.
Move.
Motion, a second to approve. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Get first reading, Madam Auditor? Appropriation?
First reading.
Yeah. So we all?
Just by title only, please?
She would always.
I tried to get that done, sorry.
Oh, got it. Golding?
Yes.
Notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal offices of Porter County, Indiana will meet in Porter County Government Administration Building located at 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso, Indiana, 46383 on January 24th, 2023 at 5:30 to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budget for the year 2023 and to transact any further business which may come from the council. The general fund, 1,000 salaries, 3,187 salaries, 6,214. Accident.
Report.
Accident report fund, 1100 per diem, $13,071. Q of capital development CCD, Fund 1138, motor vehicles, 49,000. Emergency medical services, 1151. Maintenance agreements for $29,944.40. Stormwater fund, 1182, salaries of 3,630, FICA of 278, PERF of 407. Assessor's reassessment fund, 1188, dues and subscriptions, 5,952. School resource fund, Fund 4923, PERF of 1,845. Coroner fatality review fund, Fund 4930, equipment other than vehicle, $1,111, $1,100. 97.067 Department of Homeland Security Fund, 8157, other equipment for $1,112, $186, $1,112, 21.027 ARPA COVID fiscal recovery fund, Fund 8908, a reduction of 5 million.
All right, thank you. So we'll get going. Commissioners, couple requests up here. There's an additional $49,000 to motor vehicles. Reason? Yeah, please. An additional $49,000 to motor vehicles. Reason, reimbursement of the CCD fund from vehicles sold at the sheriff's 2022 auction that were paid out of the CCD fund. Does want to start doing, you want me to do them both together?
Yeah, together.
What's that?
Second.
What happened?
I said together, but I'll make a motion if that's.
Oh, I thought you were okay. Good, yeah, good.
Together, this is an emergency service fund. There's another additional $29,944.40 to maintenance agreements. Reason appropriation needed for the 2023 heart rate monitors payment.
Move to approve both?
Second.
The motion is second on the two additional. Discussion. So I, my question is, so the vehicles, I guess, I'm just interested, why do the additional? I mean?
When the money comes back in, the State Board of the Council, the money has to go back to the account that originally purchased it. And so, how, and then that's the money that they rotate through to buy the next round of vehicles when it's in that budget line. So when it comes, it comes. That's why it's off kilter from normal budget time.
Gotcha. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Can we get a roll call on both the additionals, please?
First additional, $5,49,000. Redstone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozek?
To clarify, are we just voting on one now? Because my motion was for both.
We can do both.
Yeah, we can do both.
Roll call for individual ones.
I just want to make sure. We don't have to do a roll call for each one, though, right?
Harold, what do you think?
I don't think we need to do a roll call for each one as long as, but we can. I don't think it hurts to do it individually, but it probably saves some time to do it.
Well, the motion was made with both, so we would.
Right.
Historically, they would, this would cover both.
Let's just do it on, on both of them. Just a roll call for both.
Sorry, I just want to.
No, that's okay.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
Andy Bozek, yes?
All right, we good? Is that everybody? Thank you. All right. We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll work our way through some kinks, new people, everything's good? Yes, have a good night, thank you. Development stormwater, stormwater fund, additional $3,000, $3,630 in salaries, $278 to FICA, $470 to PERF. Reason appropriation needed to cover the 2023 salary, FICA, and PERF for executive assistant county engineer slash assistant director in the Form 144 is $43,260 to $46,890 executive assistant county engineer slash assistant director. Reason executive assistant county engineer assistant director increasing the salary in additional of $3,633. Correct me, this is just some cleanup from what we had agreed on during budget session? Is that what we're doing? This is anything new?
Correct.
So this is just, just a little cleanup, same thing we got to do with, I think, the sheriff a little bit too, so. Yeah, just cleaning it up, yeah.
Make the motion on the additional in the Form 144.
Second. Motion, a couple seconds, discussion. Can we get a roll call on the additional and the 144, Madam Auditor? Thank you.
Rivas?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bozek?
Yes.
Rickner?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Just a point of order.
Yes.
If there is any issues referenced individual ones, it's going to be a problem if we do them all together.
What was the comment or something?
Well, when you handle five different issues at one time and there's any discrepancy, we're going to have an issue with it. So we need to have individual, I know it's quicker just to do all five at one time.
If that's what you want, Madam Auditor, I got no problem with it.
From the standpoint of having problems.
If you're, if that's, if you're comfortable with that, we can, I got no problem with it. So with that being said, you guys with the additional, was that, why don't we just separate those two then? Start over the stormwater additional for the, for the.
It's already been voted on, we don't need to retract.
You don't want to retract, do it? Okay. All right, from now on, we'll do it separately on the additionals, for sure, thank you. Passes, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Sheriff, we got a general fund additional, $3,187 of salary. Reason to cover the cost of change in appointed position of patrol commander to captain and lieutenant to patrol commander effective first pay.
Jeremy, we actually would like to strike that from the.
Withdrawn.
What are you, what are we striking, the whole thing?
No, just that one.
Just the additional?
$13,000 and the 144 change.
Well, I was doing the additional of the general fund.
I'm sorry, I said $13,000. I meant $3,187, the captain, the lieutenant.
Okay, so you want to strike that additional?
Yes, sir.
You want the 144?
Nope, we're working on some restructuring.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to table that and because we're working on some future restructuring within the department, we're just trying to get ironed out before we come to you guys for some, some additional permission and to add on to different ranks and move some around, so we're going to table that.
I just didn't want to waste your time, come back for more later.
So we just won't take any action, that's fine, Harold, just no action. So accident report fund, there's an additional $13,071 to per diem. Reason to cover the cost approved by the council, 2023 budget, advertised amount was less than total. There's a motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Roll call on the accident report additional.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
Ronald Stone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozek?
Yes.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes. Passes. 7-0, resource officer fund, additional $1,845 to PERF. Reason appropriation needed for line item due to salary adjustment. Motion, second, discussion. Roll call on the additional for the resource officer, please.
Ronald Stone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozek?
Yes.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
7-0, Department of Homeland Security grant, an additional $112,186,000. Did I say that right, $0.67 to other equipment. Reason appropriation needed for replacement x-ray and remote firing system and pan stand equipment.
That's a grant.
Yes, sir.
Move.
Motion, second, discussion. Nobody want to knows what the pan stand?
What's an x-ray? I didn't need an x-ray.
It's bomb squad, bomb stuff, yeah, bomb stuff.
Oh, no kidding.
All right, any other questions, discussion? Can we get a roll call on the additional for the grant?
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
Ronald Stone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozek?
Yes.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes. Passes. 7-0, jail general fund, Form 144, $63,340 to $55,442. Program Director Chaplin and then Support Service Director, $50,374 to $63,340. Reason, no additional needed in salaries, the difference of the $5,048 additional in total annual salary. Changing the Support Service Director and Adjusting Program Director Chaplin, both effective first pay period.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion, second. This was just something that kind of got cross-routed, I think, in the, the salary report that we did, the wage study.
We're not talking to the sheriff, he also, the employees know about this chain that's coming.
Yeah, yeah, they're all aware of that and they understand, so it's not an issue.
So, no money, it's just a 144 here. Any further discussion? Was there a motion, a second?
Yes.
Motion, second. Can we get a roll call on the Form 144 change, please?
Mike Justin?
Yes.
Ronald Stone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozek?
Yes.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes. 7-0, thank you.
Thank you.
This crowd's lighting up on you, you must be doing good now, I don't know. Now, the assessor, Porters Township Assessor, I think she's sick and so I don't know what you guys want to do with this additional. I'll read it off, whatever your pleasure is.
You want to?
If you want to table it, I don't care, it's whatever you guys want to do. There's an additional of $5,952 to dues and subscription. Reason appropriation needed to pay subscription to CoStar.
I'd like to know a little bit more, is there any way, does the county have?
Can make a motion to table if you'd like.
I'd like, okay, I'll make a motion to table it. I'm going to ask a.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second to table, discussion.
Should we ask who, if she knows what that is?
If she were here. Is she here?
Yeah, she's here.
Okay.
Do you know what CoStar is? And I, I'm sorry, there's a motion, I shouldn't ask.
No, it's discussion, have at it, yeah.
Do you know what CoStar is? Do we use that for the county?
Yes, the, the assessor's office uses CoStar. It's a, it's a multiple listing service, if you will, for commercial. We use, we use MLS for residential, but this is a for commercial process.
So she's asking for 59, 52. Do we pay for that already? And you guys can share a subscription, or is this her portion of it?
Yes, we do. No, we, we already pay for that, but she has to come here to use it. She, I think she's looking to get her own subscription.
Oh, and she doesn't have that now?
She does not.
Oh, okay, I agree with the table.
Fine, thank you.
Excuse me, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to table? Could we get a roll call on the motion to table, please?
Redstone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozek?
Yes.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes.
And Mike Justin?
Yes.
7-0, thank you.
Thank you.
This crowd's lighting up on you, you must be doing good now, I don't know. Now, the assessor, Porters Township Assessor, I think she's sick and so I don't know what you guys want to do with this additional. I'll read it off, whatever your pleasure is.
You want to?
If you want to table it, I don't care, it's whatever you guys want to do. There's an additional of $5,952 to dues and subscription. Reason appropriation needed to pay subscription to CoStar.
I'd like to know a little bit more, is there any way, does the county have?
Can make a motion to table if you'd like.
I'd like, okay, I'll make a motion to table it. I'm going to ask a.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second to table, discussion.
Should we ask who, if she knows what that is?
If she were here. Is she here?
Yeah, she's here.
Okay.
Do you know what CoStar is? And I, I'm sorry, there's a motion, I shouldn't ask.
No, it's discussion, have at it, yeah.
Do you know what CoStar is? Do we use that for the county?
Yes, the, the assessor's office uses CoStar. It's a, it's a multiple listing service, if you will, for commercial. We use, we use MLS for residential, but this is a for commercial process.
So she's asking for 59, 52. Do we pay for that already? And you guys can share a subscription, or is this her portion of it?
Yes, we do. No, we, we already pay for that, but she has to come here to use it. She, I think she's looking to get her own subscription.
Oh, and she doesn't have that now?
She does not.
Oh, okay, I agree with the table.
Fine, thank you.
Excuse me, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to table? Could we get a roll call on the motion to table, please?
Redstone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozek?
Yes.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
All right. Auditor, auditor ineligible homestead fund, a transfer of $1,161.01 from office supplies and furniture fixtures over $100. Reason, final invoice for new chairs purchased by previous administration.
About time they got.
About time they got some chairs.
Move to approve.
Motion, second, discussion. See none, it's a transfer, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. ARPA COVID fiscal recovery, ARPA COVID fiscal recovery fund, there's a reduction in front of you for $5 million to Memorial Opera House contractual. The reason, appropriation reduction to Memorial Opera House contractual.
So we're.
Motion approved.
Are you guys looking to do?
There's a motion, second, the motion is second to do a reduction in this line item.
And what do we put there? Are you guys just talking about pulling the money back and holding on to it? Unallocated?
Allocated.
Allocate, there you go.
It's just an unallocation of that $5 million out of that budget. Although opera house contractual.
So right now, if the commissioners wanted to spend it on the Memorial Opera House, they could do it. Once we've taken that back, they're not going to be able to.
Correct. Once we, yeah, this, they won't have that $5 million in that line item.
And what's the plan going forward? Are we working with them to try to?
Hope so.
Get this solved, or? I was asking.
I mean, it looks to me like we're in a stalemate here. You have commissioners who want to do, you know, heavy renovations, and we have people who want to do the expansion. And to me, it seems, you know, they've only been in their job 24 days. I think it's unfair for them to pull the money back. At least give them, you know, a couple months. I know, you know, Jim has met with Skilman, Barb has went to the Memorial Opera House and spent hours detailing all the issues that it has, so it's not like they're not doing anything. You know, at least give them a couple months. I mean, whether it's in, whether it's in their account or our account, it just, it just seems like it's, like we're taking a shot and we're getting into politics, when it's like, at the end of the day, if, if they don't want to expand it and we want to expand it, now we're in a stalemate. And that really doesn't solve, that doesn't solve anything for anybody, because if we, if it needs to be rehabbed, then it should get rehabbed.
We agree. In fact, my feelings on it is it's, this is old business, it's already been voted on and in fact by the majority. I feel like, personally, I feel like the, this is, I would like to have the money brought back so we know what it's going to be spent on. But we want to know what their plan is before, you know, that we have an opportunity to see what they want to do. In my opinion, I feel like there's already been a plan that was approved, and I would like to see that go forward.
I agree, Sylvia, with that, and that's why, I mean, to be fair, Barb just got here, Commissioner Biggs has been here for six years, this isn't a new plan. This Memorial Opera House, I think, goes back to even when we started doing the facilities upgrade, you know, it just didn't make the list, you know, because the price tag for that went up. But that, when we did that, we also upgraded the Expo Center, if I remember, I don't know, I could be wrong, $5 million spent on the Expo Center. But this has been going on for a long time, so this isn't like giving them a chance.
See, like, the longer we wait, the more expensive it will get.
Right, but the thing about it is, we did just have an election, so we do have a new commissioner that has to digest all this. And like I said, it just seems to me like 24 days doesn't seem like it's a long enough time for, for, you know, for her to digest this, so it just seems like we're taking a shot. But again, if, if we want to pull it back, again, it's not going to get, it's not going to get resolved, because if, if those two just want to rehab, do a, do a major rehab and say the, the majority here wants to do an expansion, who loses? The Memorial Opera House, because at least it could get, get renovated, is the way I look at it, but.
We would love to have it renovated, and we've been, I would, I think that it's a wonderful project for the county. It's, it's like, for the county seat, it's, it's something that's needed. They're cramped, what is it, 1894, 95, I always get the dates mixed up. That was, it was fabulous to build it like that. But now, the, the building is not large enough for what it's drawing, and we have children that are wanting to get involved in it, and it just needs to be, in my opinion, expanded. And it was voted on and approved, and I just feel like we need to go forward.
Yeah, if I, if I could add a little context to the discussion, just to get everybody up to speed, including audience members who might not be. Of course, what we're talking about is the plan that has been discussed, debated, voted on multiple times in terms of what should be done with the Memorial Opera House. So the plan that's on the table as it stands today, which, if you look at the votes, whether it be on the council and/or the commissioner's office, it's eight or nine out of 10 people were in agreement with the current plan on a consistent basis. And that plan basically stated, and not suggesting that everyone's going to agree with it, but that, that plan stated that we were going to take $5 million from the ARPA funds and allocate that toward the project, and then also in cooperation with the, with the Memorial Opera House Foundation, they were going to contribute $2.5 million, so for a total of $7.5 million renovation to the facility. And so that's the plan that was finally presented, finally voted on and approved, and, and so that's where that $5 million sits today. It's currently in the Memorial Opera House contractual agreement, and I think the suggestion is to take that $5 million out until a new plan could perhaps be presented. And so if, if the commissioner's office is working on a new plan, I think it'd be interesting to see what they, what they come up with, but the majority of the council, anyway, has in the past, has said that Plan A is what we want to, we want to move forward with. And, and I don't want to rehash the importance or the significance of the Memorial Opera House necessarily, because we've, we've covered that ad nauseam for the last year. We've talked about renovating, renovating the Memorial Opera House for years. There's plans in place and have been in place for quite some time, so it's not a, it's not a new topic, you know, it's a historical structure that we have in downtown Valparaiso that was built in 1893, and it's adjacent to a sheriff's residence building that was built in 1860, that also is in need of desperate repair and renovation as well. So I think part of, what I'd like to see, if there is a new plan out there, I'd like to see what that plan looks like for the Memorial Opera House. I'd like to see what, what effect that would have, if any, on the sheriff's residence, because that's another component of what needs to be, you know, what needs to be cared for. And so as we look at the $5 million from ARPA specifically, that has been discussed ad nauseam in the past in terms of whether or not it's an appropriate use of the ARPA funds. Many, many people would say that it is. In fact, they would say that it's a perfect use of the ARPA funds based on the services that it provides and, and also it being located in a census tract, and for all those reasons, it makes perfect sense. And, and I applaud the city of LaPorte for what they just recently announced in their civic, LaPorte Civic Center, which they have just signed on for a $6 million renovation to their, to their facility. And it's a city-owned facility, similar to the Opera House and Sheriff's Residence, where it's a county-owned, county-owned facility. And they're taking, their $6 million for their renovation is in fact coming out of, part of, the $11 million that they received in COVID, COVID ARPA funds. So they're, for all the same reasons that, that have been mentioned in the past for taking care of the Opera House in a proper, in a proper fashion, the city of LaPorte have found themselves, and their, their facility is in 1929. Of course, it's a beautiful facility that also should be cared for, also should be utilized to its fullest extent, which we feel, many of us feel the same way about the Memorial Opera House. So I think until there's a, another plan put forward, it would be prudent to, to wait
I think the council person, Stone, indicated that Commissioner Regness had gone down there and looked through it, and I don't know if Commissioner Biggs was talking to Skilman, but...
I'm just saying, there's, there was a lot, they, one of the first things they did, because I picked up the phone and I called people, it's like I've called most of you and had meetings with you and, and talked, and that's, I believe you have to talk to people to understand what people want to do. And, you know, Mr. Biggs, Mr. Biggs had Skilman there, you know, doing the assessment. Barb went, I believe, for a couple of hours and took notes and said, yeah, this, we need to, we need to do something with this. It's a nice building, we need to, we need to keep it, keep it going. So, and I'm not speaking for the commissioners, this is what they told me. And as far as the plan, if we, if we put forward five million dollars, the foundation's putting in the other two and a half. When is the foundation going to get the two and a half? We're going to have to borrow the two and a half until the foundation pays us back, correct? So the plan, if you really wanted to fund it, you should have put seven and a half million dollars in it, fully funded, and then, then the foundation could have paid us back. But really, the plan isn't fully funded, it's only funded up to five million dollars. So we're going to have to borrow money, the other two and a half million dollars till the, till the, you know...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, this was voted on unanimously last year. It's already done. That's why I'm wondering, why is this now, why are we, are we starting over?
If the race went the way it did, this is where we were going to be, this is where we ended up.
So it's politics we're talking, that's what we're talking about.
It's been politics all along, yeah.
The longer we wait, it's like everything, the more expensive it's going to get.
So it's not what's best for the county or what's best for majority, for the Opera House itself, it's politics.
Oh, it's communication, it's the lack of communication. It always comes down to the lack of communication.
That's what it's turning into.
That's what it is. Nobody's picked up the phone and talked to the commissioners, or brought them in and said, no, let's try to work through it.
It's a public meeting now. I've seen one commissioner that voted for it, I mean, this is a public meeting too.
I talked for a short while tonight.
It could be right here.
With Commissioner Regness, and I asked her to please, you know, let's talk about this, we need to come together so we can go on with, with business, because there's so much that we have in front of us that we can accomplish. And it's, it's a...
So I'm just one vote, but...
And we have the money.
Yes, and I'm just one vote, but it's, it's, and I won't vote unless we're addressing all of the needs. And one of the big needs is, is, yeah, a couple hundred people into the entrance to that place, whether you're, want to get a, a drink, whether you want to buy a T-shirt, whether you want to go to the bathroom, it's just the space needs there. To move, those bathrooms need to be moved. So if we're just going to, you know, do what we did ten years ago, tuck point a little bit, fix a few windows, put some caulk in it, we'll be right back here in ten years. But it's not, that's not even addressing the full needs. We're going to do this, we need to address the full needs for the next twenty-five, fifty years.
And I agree with you.
And that was addressed in the plan.
I agree with you a hundred percent. The only thing that I said was, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, twenty-four days, they've been in office. Let them, let them, let them work through it, and I just think it's a shot to, to pull the money back, right, wrong, or otherwise. That's, that's my opinion, we can vote out, you want to pull the money back, we pull the money back. And they can sit here and present a plan and tell us what they're going to do, and if they want to spend three and a half million dollars or whatever they want to do, then, then we can all vote on it.
I think that's what...
I just thought it would have been better to do this, I think, have some communication and have some, you know, some understanding, because if, if, if they don't want to do it and say we want to do it, it's, we're stalemated. So in my opinion, people that lose out is Porter County, is a building not getting renovated, that's...
That's exactly right.
Yeah, but if we, if we leave that five million there, they can come up with some kind of a plan, two of them will, will vote it in, and we have no say in it, so...
We vote whether or not we're going to fund it.
So this, 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 we've already... This makes it happen.
I'd rather pull it back sooner.
I mean, that's why I don't know.
So it gives them a...
Again, I just think it's a timing, I, I think it's a bad, it's bad timing to do this. If, if we want to pull it back, I, I have no problem, but I think we should have gave them a little bit more time. I mean, we, there's a lot of stuff, I mean, I've been, I've been on a job twenty-four days, went, went through the 2022 budget, 23, 2023 budget. I went through Baker Tilly's financial analysis. We have a lot of problems coming up, a lot of issues we have to solve, as far as financially, in my opinion, from what I see, so...
And we both saw them, that's our job.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call on the five million dollar reduction to Memorial Opera House contractual services out of the COVID Fiscal Recovery Fund?
Jeremy Reavis?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
Redstone?
No.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Andy Bozak?
No.
Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
All right, passes, five two. All right, we get a second reading?
On this day, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, the following appropriations were passed. Accident report on 1101, per diem, thirteen thousand seventy-one. Upper Capital Development CCD Fund 1138, motor vehicles, forty-nine thousand. Emergency Medical Services Fund 1151, maintenance agreements at twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty cents. Stormwater Fund 1182, salaries, three thousand six hundred and thirty, FICA, two hundred and seventy-eight, perf, four hundred and seven. School Resource Fund, Fund 4923, perf, one thousand eight hundred and forty-five. Coroner Fatality Review Fund, Fund 4930, equipment other than vehicle, one thousand one hundred dollars. Ninety-seven dot oh-six-seven, Department of Homeland Security Fund 8150, Upper Capital, one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Twenty-one dot oh-two-seven, ARPA COVID Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund 0908, Memorial, Memorial Opera House contractual reduction of five million. Second reading.
Yep, thank you. There you have it, second reading.
Move to approve?
Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, through the roll call, approving second reading.
Jeremy Reavis?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
Redstone?
Yes.
Redstone's?
Yes.
Andy Bozak? Mike Rickner?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Passes, seven oh, thank you. Attorney's Report.
Quiet week, quiet month.
For who?
Well, that's true. No legal storm clouds on the horizon, so that's a good...
For who?
You should knock on wood.
Sorry, Harold.
It's all good.
Everything's good? Thank you, Harold.[1603.21]